Good evening, like the call the Thursday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-two, Douglas Plan Board Meeting to order. Time is seven o'clock. First item, Citizens Form. Anyone in the audience or online for anything other than what's posted on our agenda? Seeing as none. Next up, A and Rs. We have Joseph Road, J M T Sleepy Hollow, possible votes. Anyone on to present their...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Stupanik. I'm a Lancer with Gary and Helmon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm here tonight to ask endorsement for an A and R plan. It's a boundary line adjustment over at Sleepy Hollow on the east side of Joseph Road. There's a couple of small parcels of land that are intended to be conveyed to the Hendersons at seventeen Monroe Street. So I'm asking for endorsement by the board tonight.
Mr. Ramoni?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I didn't have any issues. This meets all the requirements of our A and R. This is a conversion of those two small parcels of the back of lots nine point nine and nine point ten being transferred to the Henderson families will become part of their larger parcel. So all three of these will be combined into one.
Boarding questions?
I have one. To the Chair, what's this block retaining wall? That retaining wall going to the house lot down below or standing up and above?
That's a great question. So, part of the earth removal permit that we had, we have a fence, right? And the Hendersons negotiated a wall with the developers.
So the wall will be going above gray level up for the Hendersons?
It'll become the Henderson's responsibility.
Okay. It won't affect the... It won't affect the house down below it?
No, it'll be on Henderson property.
Will there be a fence, sorry, Mr. Chairman, will there be a fence also or just the wall?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know.
They asked, so lot nine point nine has not been sold yet?
No, it has not.
Okay, so anybody moving in, that's a decision that has to be made then?
I believe so.
Now, what about, if I may, to the Chair? So lot nine point one oh, we had agreed to have fencing along these property lines. Now that you're coaching in on that property line, how are you gonna have a fence?
I understand the question. I'm not sure it's for the A and R, but the fence is on back order and they are going to install it. It should go to the...
Yeah, but now you have to do another entity, the Hendersons, because they're gonna own the corner of the lot. That's why I'm checking on this A and R. We had a decision on what was gonna be done with these lots.
Well, this is a separate A and R from that development.
Okay.
We are going to get an ASB build for that at some point, and we have to compare it to what was submitted and approved.
Right, we had, we had, through the board, said that this is gonna be a fence with a pole at each property line. Well, now you're just changing it by doing this A and R, because there is no longer a corner area for lot nine point ten. That corner area is now owned by another entity, which is not part of the development. So how are you gonna put a fence there when you don't own that corner?
Would we have to bring them in for, to update the plan?
I will, I will reach out.
Do they get permission from the, from that one family to install that fence? Otherwise, you're gonna have to get them.
I think that's just beyond the scope for the A and R itself.
It isn't. It's breaking up. A decision of this board. We've had a decision on the lot, now you're breaking it all up.
With the change, they would just have to update the plans?
They can still put the fence up. It's just gonna be in a different location.
They can't. They don't own the property no more, in that corner. You're removing it.
Same to Hendersons.
Correct.
I will raise this question to the developer. I think it's a valid question.
Because we required it to be a couple of feet off the property line. Now you can't do that unless you jig-jug it.
Any further questions for the A and R?
Just a, thinking, what can you say? When it says something like block retaining wall, it should say existing or proposed in the future, so it's clarity of the drawing. Because you don't know, it says block retaining wall, they could be intent of putting it in in the future, or it's already there.
Somebody via...
Well, it should say existing block retaining wall. I mean, it's just, this is me who does these drawings, you know, puts notes on things. So, that's all, matter of clarity. So I'd rather see him do that at the time.
Sorry, so this is, they've already built this?
The wall's already built. And that's fine, just say existing. That's all.
Okay, through the Chair.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. My defense, but I don't see it as a reason to deny the A and R.
No, but the idea is, is accepting the print.
The fence has to do with the lot behind it, the lot nine point nine.
Well, now, through the Chair, I guess Mike is just asking that. They'd be sure to show the fence line, put a, you know, the little line with the little X's to show fence, proposed fence, and show it, existing retaining wall, just, just a couple of notes on here, so we can see it and assess it, right? In the proper format.
Because a retaining wall is different from what we approved.
Right. No big deal, it just needs to be updated.
Yeah. But we...
The fence would be on the other one.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, we asking for an update to this A and R or an update to the other plan?
Excuse me, this, this A and R plan meets the standards of required by state law, and these requests are beyond the statutory requirements.
Right, right. Do you understand, excuse me, through the board, you understand where we're coming from? We might have approved the A and R with approved, gotten an approved fence. Well, now you're changing it, all right? So you're changing the whole project down there, you're changing right now. So...
And, excuse me, for the Chair again, I mean, just, again, maybe it's ticky tacky, but it's really important when you have a retaining wall being shown there, whether it's a stone ceded wall, it's existing.
Well, the wall has nothing to do with the A and R.
But it's, but it's part of the whole, just plan being correct, I don't know.
The A and R deals legally with the boundaries. These other issues are valid issues, but not statutory required issues.
Still gonna do the lane swap, so. All right, so we'll inform the developers that these changes are made, that they'll update the plan itself.
The other plan.
Yes. All right. Any movement on this?
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Marx.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gerco.
Are you maxed out?
Qualified, I have no choice. Aaron Sokrad, aye, is what it is.
I was gonna say aye.
Aye, I did.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's...
Mr. Preston is eligible for the votes.
Sorry, I, we got lost here.
Mark Sorker, aye.
Oh, yes, Mr. Shark, he does.
Yeah, just pressed it up.
In any case, and just before, I should've said at the beginning, Mr., I know they wanted to be attendance on the record for that video, so. Mr. Marx is present, Mr. Sokrad is present, Mr. Schlossman is present, Mr. Preston is present, Mr. Gerco is present, and Mr. Sokrad is present, and Miss Shark is present. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Through the Chair, Mr. Stupanik. We are closed tomorrow for Veterans Day, but we'll have the A and R signed this evening and developed for pickup on Monday.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Take care.
And there are no public hearings given for tonight. Moving on to additional business. Reduction requests, Sleepy Hollow, this one I need to update some.
So, yeah, we did receive a request, but I sent this off to peer review. We don't have a response yet. So, there was some work done on the property, sidewalks, curving. So, they're looking for reduction for the work. It's already been done. They haven't asked for a reduction on the lawn at all since its inception, so. It's gone through the proper channels. It's just supposed to wait for tonight, even though maybe on the agenda, so. That's like it. The White and Heights progress. Okay, so, White and Heights, at our last meeting, I mentioned that White and Heights is getting ready to pave, and they want to put on the top course. I engaged our consultants, Corey Broder, Doug Bush from Lard, to go take a look at the stormwater system before they start paving. They identified a good amount of silt in basin. Obviously, we know everything's running off. So we asked them to do some of the work, get the, get the basins cleaned out, anything that involves large equipment before you put on the top course. They did some of the work. The building commissioner was out there today. He believes that they may not have done as much as they could have in the basin, in the basin at the end of this street. So I'm gonna send Corey and Doug, our consultants, back over there again, just to verify before they go to start paving. So, we got a close eye on it. Consultants have been out there once already. I'm gonna go out, I'm gonna have them go out there again just to verify before the top course gets applied. So, just wanted to update the board on what's happening. They were supposed to pave today. They have now been pushed off to next week because we want to make sure this can stop.
Is Ryan covering this?
Yep. So, that was a brief update, but just wanted to follow up with you.
How much of a reduction, through the Chair, how much of a reduction are they asking for now?
White and Heights has not asked for a reduction yet.
But Sleepy Hollow, it's...
You went back to that signal.
Are we gonna take that one out or not?
No, neither of these need a motion at this point.
Says request, so I thought...
Yeah, they, I sent it to our consultant, but... May I put a number on it again?
Wait to hear from the consultant.
Correct.
Okay, moving along, C ninety-three Davis Street, update.
So, I received an email today from Ms. Mattson, who's the owner of the ninety-three Davis Street property. I passed it along to the town administrator, because it contains some information that I'm not really sure how to interpret at this time. Given that, I probably would not have put this on the agenda, but I think that's all I can say at this time. I need a little bit more clarity on the email I received, and I need to talk to the administrator. So, that's all I have, unfortunately.
My cat on, on ninety-three Davis, we all know this is going on a year and a half now.
Yeah. It seems like there was a major delay for her, that even she's not happy about it, so I don't know how much more I can say.
I don't know, right? Are we ever gonna have a top court? Through the Chair?
Maybe a request for it. The board wants a, for it to be present, maybe get some correspondence from the town administrator, progressive, update, probably move the, forward the update that she provided, at least to the board.
Does she agree to have it done?
It was pending.
May I ask? Is it a plan?
It's part of the project.
It's a year and a half ago.
We're gonna get some correspondence from the town administrator, some input.
It was a bit of a confusing email. I really need, I really need more follow-up with the board. That's what I plan on doing.
And, when's the next meeting?
My next meeting is December eighth.
Well, it's been on the agenda anyways. We'll keep it on the agenda if there's a... Shall I respond to any requests that come in?
Okay.
And, should probably make sure we have all our ducks in a row for, if anything can be done.
Okay. Would you be interested in a request to town council, see what our options are?
Please.
Yeah, okay.
And how to pursue enforcement.
Okay.
Where we have all the board, we'll not do like that.
May that come in the form of a motion from the board?
I like that motion.
Motion to...
Request town council?
Town council.
Yeah, the way I said, the board's options are...
Through the Chair, put that out to me. Obviously, you have the information, you fed it through the emails and through the town administrator.
Provided.
You can't, have to know what it is, if it's, they're selling it, somebody died, it's the end of it, it's closing, I mean, I, we don't even know what the situation is, that's correct. It's like fine scot.
Sure.
Has to be done, like, certainly.
So there's a motion on the table?
Yep.
By Mr. Wicker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preston. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So, Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Okay, next, D four sixty-six Northeast Main Street, Upton Site Remediation, update.
I think Matt asked that I present kind of a complete history of the project.
If you can just see your name and address.
Eugene Burnett, President of Cover Technologies and Upton Site. He also has... And Bruce Haskell is our environmental engineer. He also works for the Town on Environmental Compliance Matters, the Town of Douglas. He's my environmental engineer as well. Alan Engineering prepared all of the survey documents, both at the outside of the project and now with the ASB build stage. And Matt had asked if I could give a history for all of those that were on the board back in two thousand and thirteen, when we started the project and I was working with Bill Kundif. The property in question...
Come on up. I'm gonna make sure that the microphone picks you up.
The property in question was a, a bad gravel pit, defunct gravel pit, with a small portion of level land at the front, next to four sixty-six Main Street, that was a sawmill and is a sawmill today. The rest of the property was excavated down to one-to-one slopes to the maximum depth possible from the propping lines to the bottom of the basin, approximately a foot or two feet above groundwater. The owner was, approached us, asked if we could basically remediate the site and create the maximum amount of level property consistent with the surrounding area, and at the level of property to maximize the usable space for approved zoning use. We entered into an agreement to fill the site and bring it up to the grades that were from the street back to a control basin, a drainage control basin. We came before the board, the board approved the proposal, and as I understood it initially, we weren't really sure where the jurisdiction of the board was. Bill Kundif felt that because it was disturbance of over an acre, that it fell within the purview of the board to be involved in a permit action. So, the, the conditions of the permit of concern to the board and that are specified in the actual permit application and in the, and in the surety agreement are related to the establishment of three-to-one slopes and their vegetation, and the collection of all drainage to be kept on site and directed towards a detention basin at the rear of the site. And, from two thousand and fourteen, when the project started until sometime in two thousand and fifteen, you know, a certain amount, a relatively small amount of fill was brought in.
This is yours?
The, in two thousand and sixteen, I left the company at the time in a litigation matter, was away from the company for three years during that time. The owner of the company, of Cover Technologies, determined that they didn't want to continue with the project, approached the town, said that we were done per the terms of the agreement, approached Bill Kundif, said, we're done. Bill Kundif said, no, you're not, and we're not returning your bond because the slopes are not at three-to-one, and that resulted in the previous owner of the company hiring an attorney and suing the town for the return of the bond proceeds. I returned to the company in two thousand, late two thousand and eighteen, beginning two thousand and nineteen, immediately contacted Bill Kundif, who I had dealt with in the past, attempted to resolve the issue Bill had. No issues with me, but had significant issues with the prior owner. I agreed to withdraw the lawsuit, continue the project to completion. Bill had since moved on. His big thing again, when we restarted the project, I just want you to get the slopes vegetated and, you know, a detention basin. If there are no off-site impacts, I have no issues. So, we set about re, hiring a new environmental engineering firm, Bruce Haskell at Land and Environmental, to redo the soil management plan, to approve, review and approve all soil materials that were coming to the site according to the terms of the original permit, which he has done. As of last fall, early spring, we reached final grades. In the process of reaching final grades, we did discover that the original grading plan showed grading from the street back, which would have destroyed the sawmill and the small woodland buffer, you know, the tree buffer between the front of the property and the back. That was never the intent. The front of the property was in current use as a trailer parking yard, and it's also the area for potential proposed septic system. So, the grading plan was revised in the field to reflect the same grades and pitch, but starting at the sawmill level and moving back. That resulted in higher final elevations of the platform, but everything else, all the water is still directed to that back area. The berm's been installed, the slopes have been vegetated, the detention basin, we just had Alan Engineering based upon a site visit by Matt and the building sector do a review of the drainage calculations. The drainage calculation showed the actual ASB build basin is about twice the size of what was proposed. And the, all of the surrounding areas were lower than all of the surrounding properties, including the property behind where the warehouse is going, and we're matching the grade at what was McIntyre's entrance. And there's a, it's a drainage swale right along the line of McIntyre's property and this property. So basically, the project is complete. We don't have any further intention to do anything more. I really don't know what the owner's plans are, but every single square foot of that platform is used right now for log storage and log processing. There's a constant flow, inflow and outflow of materials. We approached the board under the request to return the bond based upon, you know, the slopes being complete and vegetated and the, the basin being constructed. Matt had asked that we substantiate that with an ASB, and I thought it would be, you know, we could do it somewhat more simply. That's where we are.
Mr. Chairman, I have sent this off to Jeff Walsh, your greatest engineer. He provided us with a work program. We just have to collect payment and get him mobilized to complete this review. I really appreciate representatives being here tonight, just to give us the history again, because I wasn't part of that at all, and I really needed to know, and I'm sure some reminders needed to be done.
Well, you remember that start?
It's been over for a minute.
Sixteen.
It started, well, it started in thirteen. Thirteen was the permit was issued.
Okay.
So, we're having peer review, and I know there's nothing being floated on tonight, but I would anticipate that Mr. Walsh's review and the Benny back and forth need to be done prior to our December eighth meeting. Just to call some of your attention, the most pertinent issues. The permit language is very clear. It says that the, that the purpose of the bond is to assure that all slopes are vegetated, and that's on paragraph, that's paragraph sixteen of page five of the initial original permit. The surety language reiterates that. It says the sole purpose of the surety is for the, the surety is for the sole purpose of ensuring that the, the slopes are constructed and stabilized and the detention basin is built as planned, that we've built a bigger detention basin, so.
Yeah, I remember, I'm a little bit so, came to find us, I'm, I do remember the years of turmoil. I remember that, they're coming back, we heard that, okay, they seem to kind of continue on, so, I'm glad to hear that too, that it's done.
Yeah, after all that, they've got to, it's final, final ending.
Yeah, Chair, just to clarify, I mean, it was never Bill that denied anything. Bill was our engineer, and if they, you know, all the denials and approvals are done through the board, and it was a board decision.
Right. I wasn't, you know, I wasn't part of that during the period, and I just know that there was, you know, the town council called, you know, when I, when I met with Bill, town council, and Bill and I talked, said, look, I have no interest in pursuing litigation when it's a fairly simple thing to resolve.
Yeah, I was, I was amazed that I went that far myself.
It just seems, the whole thing is...
After all these years, it's finally resolved.
Yeah. So, my only comments, when I and I were talking about it, about this, is just that the peer review reflects the specific language of the, of the bond release, you know? Because it is, as I said, we are higher than what was planned, you know, originally, but it was because we mistake in the original game plan at the front of the site.
Yep. Great. I'd like to hear it finally.
You have any questions for Bruce?
I've got nothing I had, if you don't.
Any questions, car, Collins, from all the board?
Andy, give him a, have an answer back to my peer review.
He gave us a work program, we just need to, we just need to check, sign it, and engage it, and he said he'll have it ready for our next meeting.
What's that, works? That works?
No, that works for me. I'll be happy to see...
Be for Christmas.
I was just curious, I can't remember how much it was after all.
We don't have the, the bond amount?
The bond amount was fifty thousand dollars. And it's a tripartite agreement, I think I, I provided you a compure of that.
Well, it's in the other way.
Does it, can affect, is he still your town council?
No, it's, yeah.
He's basically a company.
Yeah.
So he's familiar with it, and he's familiar with all the language. He has the original bond instrument. I have, it was a certificate of his deposit, so, it just needs to be released.
Very good, excellent. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Glad it's done.
Me too.
Probably deal with the owner.
Thanks for coming in. We'll see you, uh, see you shortly.
Thanks, Kevin.
You very much.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Bruce.
Next on the agenda, E Blue Wave Solar Bond Agreement, possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, Aaron Sims from Blue Wave Solar, on Zoom.
For...
Little history here, obviously, what's aware of the Oak Street Solar, is this something you have to introduce something?
Oh, is this something? Didn't say it on there. Yeah, I'll accuse myself.
Blue Wave Oak Street Project?
Yes. So, in July, the board voted to approve the amounts of bond. There's three separate bonds, Aaron, you can probably get into the detail in a second, but we already approved the amounts, and now it's just a matter of executing the bond, and there's a signature document in our signature folder today. But I felt it was important for Aaron to be able to at least describe the bonding and, and, and talk to the board about that. So I asked him to join us tonight.
Yeah, thanks for having me. My name's Aaron Sims. I live in Southampton, and I work for Blue Wave. The point of the, the request tonight is part of purchasing a decommissioning bond is that there's an agreement that the town, the developer and the bond company can point to, to be able to define how the system will get decommissioned, has timelines with how quick we'll take action, and, and it references the, the requirements that are coming from the special permits. And so, it's mostly a, a fairly simple document, and we, we have the bond already teed up, so I can, I can share what's being shared about with you, and I obviously can send it for your review, but it's for the amount that, that was requested. And then, in addition to the decommissioning bond, we need to purchase bonds for the other two, the other two items, and so, mostly just wanted to talk that through, make sure that we were all on the same page. And at some point, we were considering paying a deposit for the amount of bond into a fifty-three G account, but we found a surety that will work with us to, to just issue all three of the, the bonds that are required.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I typically don't have any issues with the type of bond that's being done, so long as they're not combined into one. These are all three going to be separate. I think Doug was typically sees some cash bonds more often than most communities, which is nice, but not always the case. So, they're asking for a surety that is legitimate, and they provided it to us, and I don't see any issues with it. My only thing that I, I spoke to Mr. Sims about was making sure they were three separate, that helps our accounting, our accounting department... My only thing that I spoke to Mr. Sims about was making sure they were three separate, that helps our accounting, our accounting department distinguish the difference between the three bonds. That was my only request. I'm just looking for the board's, I guess, motion to sign the bond document up for us tonight.
Mr. Chair, does town council review these types of agreements?
Great question.
He's already, he's already.
Yes, town council reviewed the decommissioning agreement back in July.
I have a question, just who would sign this?
The decommissioning agreement would be the chairperson, and then the last page on the bond would actually be the town administrator.
Okay.
So, you know, there's a sign line, it's on the last page.
Yeah.
And don't sign that. That's for Mr. Wojcik.
I have nothing, but I would, it's time for me to sign that, otherwise, chair for tonight. Okay.
With the board's motion.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. The pleasure.
How many come up? To execute the decommissioning fund agreement?
With Blue Wave Solar.
Sorry, to execute the decommissioning fund agreement.
To be accepted, the bond is presented.
Hey.
Motion to me by Mr. Marx, second, second by Mr. Sokrad, all those in favor?
Aye, Green Max, aye.
Aaron Sokrad, aye.
Rich Preston, aye.
Mike Greco, aye. Simon's work upstate.
Alright, all sir. Aaron, thank you for joining tonight, appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you.
Through the chair, I'm back.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other updates on our projects. We should be expecting an as-built plan for the Golden Lake Road Solar, we can wait for that for a little while. Instead of just giving us an as-built on a stormwater system, which we get asked for, they're gonna be providing it for the entire site altogether, so. That should be coming pretty soon. But other than that, that's the only update I have this evening, I think just on to minutes.
Other updates, moving on to minutes. We have back in September eighth and September twenty-second. You know, got a chance to look through those?
Yeah, I looked through those. September eighth, right?
Oh, let's start with the eighth.
I looked at it and it was fine with me. So, just objections, I'll make a motion to approve as written. The meeting starts for September eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion to me by Mr. Greco, second by Mr. Marx, roll call vote.
Bernie Max, aye.
Aaron Sokrad, aye. Rich Preston, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
I was absent for that.
That's the, the eighth.
Actually, yeah.
The eighth you were here, the twenty-second.
Since you were here. Oh, sorry.
That's right.
It was the twenty-second, huh?
Yeah, he just voted on it.
You were. Or eighth, yes. And I, Mike Schuker, aye.
Alright. September second, absent Mr. Slick, twenty-second, twenty-second.
Likewise, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September twenty-second, twenty, twenty-two, as written.
Second.
Motion to me by Mr. Greco, second by Mr. Marx, roll call vote. Ready?
Pretty much, aye. Aaron Sokrad, aye.
Rich Preston, aye.
Greco, aye.
That one I was absent for the twenty-second.
Too much for the second, that's also.
I knew it was one of them that.
And nothing else on the agenda, if the chairman motions.
That's, if I can't do, Chair, are we gonna be making up a list of things we wanna clean up, like water wets?
Yes.
Will require kind of bring out, that'll be a real good time, if I can, or something.
That's, I want to be there right after town meeting, first meeting in December.
Yeah, bring out your town meeting.
Okay, fine. That'd be, Austin, thank you, ask.
Through the chair. So, Wednesday night, next Wednesday's town meeting?
Wednesday, yeah.
I mean, we, we have something that we want to suggest to the floor, that we want that to be withdrawn and studied more by the planning board, who is going to, I know Ernie's gonna go.
Usually those, the letters we hand to town, those.
I'm gonna walk in the meeting with him and give him to Tracy or whoever's gonna be representative.
Either the chair usually does the presenting of any articles or anything like that. I don't know who's gonna introduce this article, what the chair would do, or what the representative would move to have to continue to annual town meeting or just pass over completely. I've spoken to a couple of the selectmen already about it, so they're supposed to hash it out.
But then the board doing it, and it will be all, all second, I know those are.
I drew those up right after all of our votes, and I passed them off to the selectmen, but I'll have those printed out this time.
Good, good, I'll just do, just wanted to bring them.
Yep.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
And then Mr. Marx, second by Mr. Swicker, roll call vote in theater.
Max, aye. Aaron Sokrad, aye. Rich Preston, aye.
Mike Greco, aye. Mark Schuker, aye.
Your adjourn.